Welcome to this candidate forum for candidates for Madam Edi City Council. And I am Mary Santi. I'm a League of Women Voters member and I'm from White Bear Township. So I will be moderating this forum. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization that does not support or oppose any candidates or political parties. We offer these forums so you, the voters, can get a chance to hear candidate views on the issues that are important to you in the coming election. So a few ground rules that we used for tonight. All the candidates were invited to participate. The program will be recorded in its entirety and we will post it to our YouTube channel and you can go right to YouTube or you can go to the League of Women Voters website. L W V hyphen W B L A dot org. Get the link. The questions were most of them submitted ahead of time on our league website and they were screened to make sure they're applicable to all the candidates and to are not personal or defamatory. And all on we group them on similar issues. So we will ask as many questions as possible in the time we have. The order for speaking will do alphabetical and following that will rotate every starting speaker. The candidates' questions will be timed. Candidates have one minute to answer a question and then after both have answered, they will each have a opportunity for thirty minute rebuttal time.
Thirty seconds.
So thirty seconds, yes. And so while all the candidates were invited, two are here and they are Jeff Charlesworth and Luke Schlegel. The third candidate Lily Meander had a conflict with tonight and would not be able to make it. So we will not have opening statements. We will begin with the questions. And actually, the questions serve kind of the same purpose as the opening statement would. So we'll start with Jeff and the first question is describe your background and community involvement.
Well, I've lived in Madam Edi. I've had the pleasure of living in Madam Edi for twenty-eight years. I have been involved in the community for about eighteen of those twenty years, primarily on the parks department. I both sat on the commission and I've chaired the commission for about seventeen years. You know, I, I, my, I raised a family here. They went through Madam Edi schools and they were very well prepared. But I just am interested in giving back to the community.
Thank you. Then Luke Schlegel.
Yes, thank you for that. So I've lived in Madam Edi for nine years now with my family. I have two children currently in the Madam Edi Public Schools. For the past five years, I've been on the Finance Commission. So and last year acted as Chair of that commission where I've been, you know, and where I've been able to look at, understand and look at the finances.
He just muted.
Was I muted that whole time?
No, you're not. That was my mistake. I'm sorry. Why don't we start over?
Okay. So like I said, my name Luke Schlegel. I've been in Madam Edi for, I lived in Madam Edi for nine years with my family. I currently have two children attending the Madam Edi Public Schools in seventh and second grade. And for the past five years, I've been a member of the City Finance Commission. So had the opportunity to provide input and guidance on the annual budgeting process as well as other financial issues that come up. And really just looking now to expand on that role and help out the community that I've been living in. Thank you. You're unmuted.
Do each of you have anything more to add to your personal accomplishments and otherwise we'll go to the next question, which we'll start with Luke Schlegel. And that is what issues are you most passionate about? And what are your plans to address them?
So I would say that my primary issues are maintaining the small town city atmosphere of Madam Edi. And you know, I think there's a balance to of providing the parks, the trails and the services that people need with balancing that against the, the financial needs of the city to not let, to, to keep our current tax rate in terms of and the ability to generate that revenue to pay for that and support the, the small town and the services that we are looking for. And I think my, you know, coming from the Finance Commission, really passionate about making sure that we maintain the, the current path that the city council has put us on, which I think is a good, a good place.
Thank you. And Jeff Charlesworth.
Thank you. I, I think that, you know, three basic parts that, that I'm passionate about. One would be, you know, maintaining and improving our public safety and emergency services. It would be, you know, maintaining and expanding our parks and trails. And lastly, you know, maintaining and improving our infrastructure. And, and doing that in a, in a physical, physically responsible way. We have a real challenge here in Madam Edi because we are surrounded by much larger communities that offer a lot of services. And I think the expectation is that, is that we do too. We just have to do it with a smaller pie. And I think we're doing a good job of it. Thank you.
Okay. Any, anything to add either of you to that question? We'll go on to the next one and that will start with Jeff Charlesworth. What do you see as Madam Edi's greatest asset?
I see the residents of Madam Edi as the greatest asset. I think that, that, you know, we've, we've, we've felt nothing but welcome here. Our children have had some wonderful friendships that continue to this day. My wife and I have, have, have built some great relationships with residents throughout the community. And I just think that there's a really nice vibe in Madam Edi. And I think that people do not take what we have for granted. There is a genuine appreciation out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Luke Schlegel.
Yes, thank you. You know, I believe that the, the greatest asset that I've enjoyed in the, the nine years that we live here is actually in no small part to the work that Jeff's done on the Parks Commission. I think there's a big value to the, the parks that we have, the trails that we have. I know, you know, one of the things that I, I appreciate the most, and this is related to parks and safety, is that my, you know, my daughter's able to bike to school every day. And as a, while in elementary school, she can get there. And while that's a minor thing, are the, the city that we have with the, the safety, the parks, the trails are what really allows that and gives her the, the freedom and the ability to grow up in a way that I want and she wants.
Anything to add either of you?
Yes, I'd just like to add that, you know, it's a, it's a, a challenge that I've been involved with a while, but things like safe routes to school and just getting lines painted on roads to, to, to give a pedestrian easement. It seems that things could, should go faster than they do, but we're making great progress.
So to look at the other side of the coin here and we'll start with Luke. Where do you see the need for improvements?
So I believe, one of the things that I'm, I see as the need for improvement is to make sure that the city leverages the what limited undeveloped property we have available. You know, I, one of the things that Jeff kind of talked about this earlier, where we are a smaller city with a very different tax base than our surrounding, our surrounding cities. We don't have much property left that can be developed into different types of housing. And I think making sure that that's done in a mindful, reasonable, thoughtful way is something that is critical to the long, to drive the long-term financial situation that both Jeff and I have mentioned today.
Thank you. And Jeff Charlesworth.
Well, I'm going to echo what, what Luke said. I think we have a great challenge to create affordable housing in this community. Home prices are very expensive in Madam Edi. And it's hard for a, a young family starting out to, to move in here. And I think that we need to look at opportunities for affordable housing and, and really, really try to encourage that as, as there isn't much land left in, in the community. And, you know, I think we have to look at what is available and, and do the best we can with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And anything further to add?
I do not.
Okay, so Jeff and, and Luke will start with some more specific questions here. And this will start with Jeff. In, in two thousand twenty-two, the county will be redesigning and rebuilding Highway two forty-four between Century Avenue and downtown Madam Edi. What changes should the Madam Edi City Council focus on for this rebuild of a critical roadway for residents?
Well, there's been a lot of talk about that. And at the last council meeting, we actually did see some plans from the county. And it's, 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 you start pulling it apart and there's, there's more than it looks there. I mean, there's, there's a lot, there's a big need to create some good pedestrian ways while we're in this project, because these types of projects do not come along every year. They might come around once every fifty years. So it's very important that we have good planning as we go through this process to make sure that we address pedestrian safety and, and ways to, to move people around our community out of the, out of their, out of their vehicles, because no one meets their neighbor driving by in their car. They meet them on trails, in parks, on walks down the street. So I, I, I'm encouraged about what I've seen so far, but it's going to be quite a process. Thank you.
You aren't allowed to finish your sentence.
That's fine.
Okay, Luke Schlegel.
Yeah, so I think it, I believe what the, the city needs to push for is not only everything Jeff said, to ensure, ensure non-automobile traffic and safety of pedestrians, bikers and all other forms, but I also think we need to make sure that we're building that road or the, working with the county to rebuild that road to allow for some additional development in that area, which is something that's been talked about and would be coming up from what I understand in the near future. So not only do we need to take care of the existing traffic, but we need to prepare for future traffic loads if and when additional affordable housing or higher density housing goes into that area. So, thank you.
Anything more to add? Okay, next question. And that will start with Luke on this one. Many residents of the city walk and run around town, including young children. This is maybe something you've already talked about. There are few sidewalks in Madam Edi. What other measures besides two forty-four would you take to improve pedestrian safety?
I think from a pedestrian safety standpoint, outside of the two forty-four area, I think a lot of, I would continue on the path that the city council is on. So one, you know, there are a number of trails working their way through town that people can use for pedestrian travel. I do think from a, a, a safety perspective, that newly implemented lower speed limits on most roads is a significant, will have a significant impact on the safety of pedestrians. So I do believe that those two things are what we're able to do and making sure the city maintains that infrastructure. Again, we both talked about maintaining infrastructure for the long term. Well, that's not just sewers. That's also those trails and those walkways. So maintaining those in good shape and ensuring the lower speed limits is what I would focus on continuing. Thank you.
Yeah. Jeff Charlesworth.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we did, the, the city council did lower the speed limits throughout the, the, the city on none of the like feeder streets. And that was largely due to, we, we have, we do a community survey every, every few years. And the community survey was resounding in lowering the speed limits. And, uh, because people drive too fast and, uh, you know, especially say on Park Street down near the beach. I mean, it was, it was twenty-five, thirty miles an hour there and it shouldn't be. Another thing that has, has occurred is, uh, we've, we've looked at, at parking and trying to make sure that there's enough room through the streets in case we need to get an emergency vehicle through. Striping, uh, current streets are good, is good to create a pedestrian access. And I don't care whether they're on a bike, roller skates, walking, uh, any sort of rolling. It's all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further to add? Okay, okay. We'll go to the second, uh, next question. And that one will start with Jeff Charlesworth. Emergency response. Should Madam Edi move away from relying on paid, part-time emergency responders versus full-time emergency responders?
Um, well, I think we're going that way, quite honestly. I know that there has been talk of that. I know that it's, it's very difficult to get part-time because, you know, they have to be within seven minutes of the fire station. And as I mentioned earlier, housing in Madam Edi is expensive. So it, it's very hard to create part-time or, or get part-time. I know that, that we're looking at adding a, another medic here. I just think it's crucial. I think we're, we're very fortunate to have our own ambulance service. Not a lot of communities under twenty thousand population have got their own ambulance service with, with, with advanced life support. So I see, yeah, thank you.
You don't, I mean, you have time left.
No, that's okay. That's basically what I wanted to say.
All right. Thank you. Luke Schlegel.
Yeah, I definitely think that the city is moving in the right direction with what Jeff mentioned as far as hiring additional full-time paramedics. Again, it's not, right now, the relying on the paid-on call. It's, it's, we're not able to get the, the people and the coverage. I mean, I think we've been, it's been years upon years since we've been fully staffed. That model's just not working for a full-time, uh, advanced life support ambulance system. And so I think that for what, that's one of the key services that the city currently provides and I believe should continue to provide is that having that ambulance service located here, run by city resident, city employees, because that's what's going to drive our, our low response time. So I think something needed to be done and I think the best thing to do is to start that transition. Don't get rid of the paid-on call, but supplement that with full, additional full-time staff members.
Thank you. Any further to add? Okay, we'll go on and we'll start with Luke Schlegel. This is on affordable housing, which we touched on earlier. Is there sufficient affordable housing in Madam Edi? If not, what should the city be doing to encourage additional construction of such housing?
So I, I believe the, the answer to is there enough affordable housing is no. I, you know, that's something that the, the housing prices here are high. And I, I'm not saying that's bad, but we need to make sure that we can, can provide housing for all the people that want to live here to make, to ensure a growing community in the future. So I think what the, the city council needs to look at is again, going back to the limited developable land that we have and using that and allowing that to be developed in a way to provide that affordable housing that, that will work for both the developer as well as for the, the city to provide housing for additional families, for our growing community, to really make this the a city that is growing and can support these services that we all have come to expect.
Thank you. Jeff Charlesworth.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we need, we need more affordable housing in this community. There's no doubt about it. As I mentioned earlier, there are, there are young families that would like to move into our community for various reasons, but can't because they can't afford it. I think, I think, uh, we have to look at the very few parcels we have. And not only do we have to be open to it, but I think we have to encourage it. And that might be through a number of ways, but one would, would possibly be some TIF financing where we essentially forego the taxes on it for a period of time to allow the project to, to be a little bit more affordable. So there are ways and Luke's probably better able to talk about that than I am. But I think that we have to be open to that. We have to encourage it. And we need more affordable housing.
So anything further, either of you? Because I do have a follow-up question on that and we'd start with Jeff first. What, do you see a role in building codes and zoning contributing to the lack of affordable housing?
That's a good question. I, I need to think about that a little bit. You know, uh, you know, zoning and, and variance, you know, that, that sort of thing, you know, it seems like what, what works in one area might not work in all areas. And I think that our zoning ordinances may change over time. And hopefully to be a little bit more friendlier for everyone involved. Because some people have ideas of what they think they should be able to do and that might not be so harmonious with the rest of the community. So we have ordinances for a reason and but as, as, as we go along, you know, nothing, nothing stays the same forever.
Thank you. Luke.
So yes, I do see there being a, a role for building codes and zoning. And actually, I think it's a, a good role because there is the affordable housing that we've talked about. And some of these higher density developments are going to require those variances. And so what, by having the building codes the way they are right now, that allows for the city council and the the planning commission to take a good, long look at these projects and not, and be able to be involved in that process by, by having those codes and being able to look at the particulars that are needed. Uh, and there needs to be some flexibility there because there's, oh, you know, there's going to be, there's a, a a span between what, what makes sense for the developer, what the neighbors want, what we can handle from a safety perspective and support in our city. And I think that the, I, I wouldn't be looking for wholesale zoning or building code changes because I think the way they are now allows for the, the city to be involved in that and make sure that it fits the, what the city needs. Thank you.
Anything further to add either of you? All right. Next question. Change of subject. How can, this is on water usage. How can Madam Edi successfully reduce its residents and business summer usage of water? And we start with Luke Schlegel.
Yes. So this was a, obviously a major topic of, at the both the Finance Commission meetings and a few of the recent city council meetings. And I think the city went about it the right way. Obviously with the drought situation that we had, it was, it was critical that the city worked to drive down the, the water usage. And again, in the summer, that is primarily primarily irrigation for both businesses and homeowners. You know, we, we put some temporary rules into place. We might be reaching the point where the city should look at the, the rules around and, and maybe making the general rules tighter than, rather than using those emergency the emergency rules that we put in this year to really bring that down. Because the question is how much longer can our aquifers support, you know, one to two million gallons a day of pumping? Thank you.
Jeff Charlesworth.
Yeah, this, this summer was, was a big deal and, and it did, did get kind of scary. And the city council did implement some, some rules as far as watering. But I really think that the, the best way to go about that is to, uh, you know, try to educate our, our citizens the best we can about A, the severity and B, what they can do to help reduce their, their usage. I think that we have a very well-educated community and they understand what's going on. We're, we're not, we're, we're out of an aquifer. We're not surface water. We're not drawing water from the Mississippi or the St. Croix. We're taking it out of an aquifer and that has limited resources when you have other communities pumping as well. So I think that educating and if, if need be, making some restrictions. But since we did that this summer, I think our public works director has indicated that we have reduced our, our usage.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we'll start with Jeff along the same lines. Do you think Madam Edi should develop contingency plans for switching from ground to surface water as ordered by Judge Marinin in two thousand seventeen and upheld by the Supreme Court in December?
I think that that's been a discussion quite a bit, you know, especially since the, the White Bear Lake lawsuit came about and trying to figure out where all the water was going. But that's a terribly expensive prospect to run in water from, you know, surface water from either the St. Croix or the Mississippi. The infrastructure required for that is, is very expensive and would be a major issue for the community and its residents. So I think that if we can show that, that we can reduce our water usage and, and be a little bit more conservative, maybe we can avert that. But in, at the end, I don't know. All I know is that it will be very expensive. And I can't help but think that the Met Council will have something to say before it's all over. Thank you.
Luke Schlegel.
Yeah, and I actually think that plays very well into what Jeff said earlier with the education. So, you know, if we've got, if we have to do some planning, you know, that should be done. That being said, the, the result of that planning is a very, very expensive infrastructure project. And I think it goes into using that, you know, educating people so they know that if we are not able to cut back on our water usage, that that could be the repercussion the city's forced into. And I don't think that is in the, the city's best interest at all. So by using that, informing the, the residents that and telling them how critical it is to conserve, so we're not forced into a surface water solution, which is not something that I would like to see. But, you know, again, to, to just point, you know, the Met Councils have played in that one, we might not have a choice.
Anything more to add either of you?
Yes, we have very good water.
I would agree. I think that would be, you know, that we have very good water, Jeff. And we should do our best to, to allow for our, our public works department to continue to use the system that we're using. And to do that will require that education that you talked about.
All right. Next, next question, we'll start with Luke. All right. Next. Next question. We'll start with Luke Schlegel. What are your views on the need for expanded transit services in the northeast suburbs, especially Madam Edeai? And how should they be funded?
So I would say that my my views are are definitely changing over the past 18 months in the the current COVID environment when people are are commuting less, you know, I work in when I go into the office in downtown Minneapolis and I do believe that a a healthy transit system is needed to cover the whole, the the entire metro. The extent of that, I think, could be questioned now and the expansion of that with, you know, as we see as people return back to the office, that's still ongoing. Most of the largest employers are not yet back downtown, which limits the need. But doing that right and doing that planned out well will involve not just not just local money, but also, you know, hopefully state and federal money when available as well, because again, just like what we were talking about earlier, there's we need to make sure people can get to where they need to go, whether they're in an automobile or pedestrians or on transit.
Thank you. Jeff Charlesworth.
Yeah, I think that, you know, public transportation is is very important. Although, as Luke said during this pandemic, it has has declined. So although I'm I'm all for it, I would like to see some feasibility studies on what kind of demand it has and right-size any sort of project that that's undertaken. Because it is extremely expensive and it would require a lot of money to do. And the worst thing would be that we put something in and it wouldn't get used like it was like it was initially expected to. So it's a it's a it's a good issue. It's a big issue. And it's a complicated issue. But I think that we we need to be very measured on how we approach it. Thank you.
Thank you. And anything further for either of you? All right. The next question, we start with Jeff Charlesworth. What environmental issues do you feel the city of Madam Edeai should address?
Well, I think there's a number of environmental issues. You know, we have quite a deer population in this community and and a lot less hostas. So we have to look at that. You know, there are people in the community that are feeding the deer. So they know where to go and chronic wasting disease occurs when deers touch noses. So we need to be conscious of that and and providing a a right-size herd and a good environment for them to live in. As far as other environmental issues, we discussed water, but I certainly would like you know, some sense of of education as far as what people are putting on their lawns and gardens and what what reaction that has when it runs into the the stormwater drains and drains into the lake. So I think that there are some things out there that can be done and recycling as well.
Thank you. Luke Schlegel.
So, you know, Jeff mentioned a number of the the important issues. To me, it was the one that we talked about earlier is water and the water usage to me is is number one from that perspective. And I think there are two aspects of that. One, the water we're pumping and using. But also making sure that we're properly dealing with our stormwater runoff. And whether that's the the chemicals that people are putting on their lawns or what the city is putting on the roads, just making sure that we are not contaminating the surface water that we have. I do believe that the city council is taking a serious look at the the deer situation. So I would agree with Jeff on that because I think the final issue that is, you know, something that you see in some of our parks. And there's been a lot of work done, but it's the buckthorn removal. I mean, invasive species are whether it's plants or animals are a problem and are having a negative impact on the great parks that we have, such as Catherine Abbott in the city. And so staying ahead of that is while potentially not a life and death environmental issue, I think an important environmental issue for the quality of life in Madam Edeai.
Thank you. Anything further on that?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that we have made some really good strides in the community. One of the things that has been implemented in the last, I would say, five to 10 years is we started making our own brine, which is applied on the road surface before a storm to activate the salt faster and better. And as a result of that, we use much less salt. And we also, we also make it for other communities as well. So there are things that we're doing, but of course, we can get better.
Anything further?
Nope, not for me.
Next question is for Jeff Luke Schlegel first. How how would you handle a conflict of interest that might affect a decision you might have to make as a Madam Edeai council member?
So from my perspective, I I actually have I have thought about that and would do, you know, I probably have a very low low bar for when I would recuse myself from a decision. And that could be, you know, while I would be part of the conversation, there are situations that I know could come up that would impact my ability to make a decision. And I'm, you know, the I don't, I would feel have that low bar and make sure that there's no perception of of any conflict of interest. So I would be very open about that upfront with the other city council members, with the city administrator and make sure that while involved in conversations around those issues, when it comes down to voting, obviously with oversight and guidance from the city attorney, remove any possible perception of conflict of interest.
Thank you. Jeff Charlesworth.
Yeah, very similar to what Luke said. You just if you if there is a conflict, I think you need to make it known about what the potential conflict would be. And when it comes time to vote, you have to recuse yourself because there can't be any sense of of well, conflict, really. That's that's very important. I think that the sooner that comes out in any sort of issue, the better. And that's how I would work with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further?
Nope.
All right, we'll start with Jeff Charlesworth. And what is your understanding of the city's budget situation? If programs need to be cut or reduced, where would you begin those reductions?
Well, fortunately, the city is in pretty good shape financially. And that's that's of no accident. Our 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 Finance Committee and our Finance Director, Scott Schaefer, does a very good thoughtful job in preparing and looking forward to what the possibilities could be. With, you know, everything from replacing equipment for for Public Works to you know, painting a water tower. I mean, these are all all things that that are looked at in advance. And, you know, as residents, we see along and it looks so seamless. But as far as cutting programs, that would be, that would require, I think, some real thorough investigation and thought. I would hate to think we would have to do that, but you know, if 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 need be, that's what needs to be done.
Thank you. Luke Schlegel.
Yeah, well, Jeff and I were just in a meeting about this very topic last week in term, I think it was last week at least, where we reviewed every single department and every section of the budget. And to his point, we are in a a great position that we don't need to do that right now. You mentioned both Scott Schaefer and also all of the department heads have been able to put a budget together that provide the services that we need at a and we're able to to keep that within the the money that the the city has available. On top of that, we've been lucky enough with some of our our closed bond funds and our other contingency areas to give us a little buffer to hopefully prevent if and when we we need to leverage that or run tight, leverage those in for proper reasons to avoid having to look at any reduction in services. So, thank you.
Okay, did we get both on that question? Okay, anything further? And then we'll go. This is the last question that I have. You guys were nice and concise and we're going to finish early. So this last one, we'll start with Luke Schlegel. How and what ways are you different from your opponent? What specific issues do you differ?
Well, thinking about that, I mean, we've just talked through here right now with a lot of similar answers, to be honest with you. And early in the election cycle, you know, we have not necessarily you know, it's tough for me to to comment on where I differ from Jeff when we haven't necessarily been able to know where we stand on everything. But based on what we said today, I think the there's a lot of alignment there, you know, I I've said a couple of times today that the city council has done a great job. And I one of the reasons I'm running is to make sure that the city continues on the same track that it's on. And, you know, Jeff being a longtime member of the Parks Commission and now a city council member is part of what's done that. So I would say that at this point, I'm not going to you know, I don't I didn't hear anything today where there is any vast differences in our our views or how we go about things. I'm sure on specific issues, we might have differences, and I think that's great. But huge platform issues, I don't, I didn't hear any today. So thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Charlesworth.
You know, I I don't really view Luke as an opponent. I have a lot of respect for him. He's done a very good job in the Finance Commission. And I I think that his his you know, effort in what he gives to the city is is excellent. And I think he'd make a fine councilman. I really do. So I don't, you know, we've we've talked together prior to this and very open about about what what we're doing. And you know, I I think it's a pretty cool position to be in. It really is because it speaks well for the community as a whole. And just like on the city council, we can, we can, we can disagree. But we all really appreciate what the other one brings to the table. And I have that same sense with Luke.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's all the questions we have, even though we had more time. So what we'll turn now, you are each able to make a one-minute closing statement. And if you stretch that a little bit, I think our timer is going to let you go. Within reason. Let's start with Luke Schlegel.
So I would, first of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum today. I'd like to thank Jeff for participating and engaging in a good conversation today about a number of topics. And I'm just excited to present myself. I believe I I would be an ideal candidate for the Madam Edeai City Council. While I don't have the the length of service from the city of Jeff, I've been on the Finance Commission for five years now. That's going to be a lot of insight. We talked a lot about the budgeting today. And I think my knowledge of the process and the departments would allow me to jump in and make immediate contributions. You know, again, I'm invested in the city with a father of two young children who take advantage of both the schools, take advantage of the parks. And I'm just really looking to continue giving back the way I have over the last few years on the Finance Commission and now role as a city councilperson. So thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Charlesworth.
Well, I, you know, I have to be honest, you know, I I was appointed to the Parks Commission when we had a city councilman have to resign due to illness. It wasn't something that I had ever really thought about. I was very happy running the 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 Parks Commission. But I decided to go after it because it's good to challenge myself and and learn new things. You know, on the Parks Commission, just about everything we did, you know, would be to trail, a park upgrade, a new playground. That's all pretty good stuff, you know, not a lot of resistance there. On the city council, you are asked to make some decisions that either way, you might not feel the greatest about, but there's still decisions that need to be made. So we take the best information we have, we discuss it, and we vote our conscience. And that's the very best we can do. Otherwise, I think that 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 it can it it can have the potential to wear on you a little bit. But I think that I've I've enjoyed my time on the council. I would like to go forward in another term. But this is new. I've never run for anything before in my life. So it's 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 kind of fun. And I just I look forward to the process. And I just am very, very proud to be a Madam Edeai resident and and I'm looking forward to giving back what I can. Thank you.
Thank you both. And I would like to thank both of you for putting yourselves forward to to be elected. I appreciate that. I want to thank the viewers who come out to hear the issues and think about them. I thank Sharon for timing and I thank Karen for being our invisible host. And that is all we have to do for tonight, except to tell you, remember to vote November 2nd.
And thanks again for for providing this forum for us and allowing us to 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 reach out to the community in this this time that we're in, you know, you think twice about knocking on a door or things like that. So it's it's a different way in the past. So this is just great. And I really appreciate what the league has provided for us tonight.
I agree with that. Thank you. Well said, Jeff.
Thank you both.